Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dominguez. Councilmember Rouse. Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Mayor Protem Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
And Mayor Maria.
Here. Is there a public comment not on our agenda, items not on our agenda? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close that open public comment. Would you read item number two into the record, please?
Item number two, subject fiscal year 2020, recommended operating and capital budget.
Okay, so, welcome. Ms. Antil, you're sitting in for Mr. Casey until he gets here.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Ms. Zachary, we're going to hear about our Parks Department today.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Jill Zachary, Parks and Recreation Director. I have with me today Rich Hanna, Assistant Director. Nicole Parmerly, who is our new business manager. Matthew Parker, our Parks Manager. And then Cameron Benson, our Creeks Manager. With today's presentation, we're going to go through the entire department budget and be available to answer any questions that you may have. We always like to start our budget presentation with our mission, Parks and Recreation. It's mission, our mission is to provide clean and safe parks, beaches, and recreation facilities, enhance Santa Barbara's beauty, promote stewardship of our natural resources, and to provide quality recreation and cultural experiences, as well as community services for all Santa Barbara residents. Our presentation will first focus on the general fund and our miscellaneous grants funds. A little bit on the general fund capital projects proposed for funding in fiscal year 20. And then I'll turn the presentation over to Ms. Parmerly for the golf fund and then Mr. Benson for the Creeks Fund. When you look at our personnel as an entire department, we have four funds, as I mentioned. We have just under 91 permanent full-time equivalent staff throughout the department. And we also budget for 138,000 hourly staff hours. So when you think about that, that really is what happens in our parks and our recreation facilities during summer months and also through the school year, as well as support that we have to implement operations throughout the year. In our, in our department, we have five manager positions and assistant director and a director, and I'd point out we have two vacant manager positions. It's been a year of evolution, a few years of evolution with our management team. I'm very pleased that we have new managers onboard and anticipate filling the other two positions within the first quarter of fiscal year 20. When we look at our department as a whole, it has a budget of $25 million proposed for 2020. Of that, the general fund budget is 70%. Creeks is 17%. Our golf fund, 11%. And then miscellaneous grants, 2%. Similarly, when you look at our revenues by fund, just over 50% of our budget comes from non-general fund revenues. With the general fund activities and programs bringing in just over 5.6 million. The Creeks Fund through Measure B largely, 4.2 million. And then the golf fund is an enterprise fund. All of the revenue generated on the golf course stays within the golf course. So just to the general fund, which I'll focus my remarks at this point. We also like to go back and think about our parks' community resources. If you look at the Santa Barbara's first city map in 1853, that's when our first parks were first shown as public plazas. A couple of them we still have today, and they include Plaza Alameda and Plaza Veracruz. But parks really are the place for our neighborhoods and our community to gather, whether they are celebrating cultural traditions, celebrating the popular events we have every year, such as Fiesta and Summer Solstice, or Earth Day, which we most recently have. They provide us an opportunity to protect open space and habitats that then aren't developed, but actually provide places for wildlife. And they're places for youth to grow physically and socially and for seniors to continue to maintain their health and wellness. Santa Barbara started with a few parks. 1903, we had three. Today, we have 60. As you can imagine, we've grown over time. And not only do we have parks and sports facilities, we have community buildings, we have six miles of public beach, wading pools, pools, playgrounds, tennis courts, pickleball courts, volleyball courts, a golf course, which is included in our 60 Parks and Sports Facilities. And then we maintained almost 63,000 trees that make Santa Barbara the beautiful place that it is. And through all of that, we also provide programs and services through our activities in our facilities and in our parks to children in our after-school programs, to people that want to use our parks and facilities for their own special events or for community events, since we have more than 125 special events in Santa Barbara every year. And then we also provide community services to households in need. Every week, we provide weekly meal programs in partnership with other organizations and food distribution and served over 10,000 households last year. All of this is possible with our staff, but also very much possible with the volunteers that help make our department successful. When we look just at the general fund, the general fund budget is just under 17.5 million recommended for fiscal year 20. Of that, just over 5.6 million comes in from revenues for programs, services, leases, and I'll provide more information on those. When we look at our personnel by division, the general fund portion of the department has three divisions, administration, recreation, and parks. Administration is just under 10%, with 8.35 full-time equivalents. Recreation, 26.4. Parks, 46.4. For a total of 81.5. The remainder of the permanent staff in our department are in the Creeks Fund. So it gives you a sense of how we went from just over 90 to 81. The other staff are largely in the Creeks Fund, with a portion of some staff allocated to the golf fund as well. When we look at our personnel changes for the next year, we have very minor changes that we're recommending. We have a vacant recreation specialist position that's housed at the Creo Recreation Center, and we're proposing to increase that position to a recreation coordinator to better serve our needs, to plan for programs and services and rentals at that facility, but also at other facilities. Similarly, we have a recreation specialist position at the municipal tennis courts. It's currently a .8 position. The services and programs have grown at that location. That staff person could well be used five days a week instead of four days a week. So we're proposing to increase that position to a full-time equivalent. To fund these changes, we're proposing to eliminate a half-time permanent position in recreation. So no additional appropriations are being requested for the 2020 budget. Some key expenditure increases to share with council. Water rates are going up again, as they have for the past number of years. So we're projecting that our costs will go up 7% next year. What the department is planning for and assuming is that despite the fact that the drought is over, we are not returning to pre-drought water use. The cost of water is such that we cannot afford it. So we will continue to operate our parks and facilities at the 2013 conservation rate. And we hope it will rain, continue to rain, which will help us achieve that without cost overruns in our water budget. We're also experiencing an increase in vehicle fuel. We did a thorough assessment of how, why, and it has nothing to do with vehicle miles traveled. It has to do solely with the cost of fuel and the way the city purchases its fuel. So we've budgeted for that. And then I think more significantly, looking at fiscal year 2020 and even more beyond, in the next two-year budget plan, we'll be looking at this much more carefully. With the changes to the minimum wage allowances, we have an extra 74,000 in minimum wage costs, wage costs for our hourly staff. What this doesn't do is it doesn't address compaction. So as some entry-level staff, their wage goes up, staff that have been onboard for a longer period of time, we're not addressing the fact that there's compaction in there and allowing for staff with more experience. And then also allowing for the staff that perhaps might come in with a different level of expertise or be required to perform different levels of work, which might require certain certifications. And a good case, a good example of that is our lifeguards, for example. An entry-level lifeguard comes in and is entry-level and gains experience. A third-year lifeguard has three years of experience. And how do you make sure you adjust those wages to account for that additional experience? We still need to do that work, and we'll be looking at that seriously in the next fiscal year and trying to plan for what that means for our programs and operations. And then expenditure increases largely in the recreation division really come from the Cabrillo Pavilion. With it reopening, we have a lot of different things planned for the facility. It's planned to open in October of this year. We are going to have new operating hours and the considerations that go with those hours. The bathhouse, the lower level of the facility will be open seven days a week, eight to 12 to 14 hours a day, depending on the day, which means we have more need for staff to be on, to be on hand for those hours of operation. We also have more facility maintenance needs in order to maintain the new facility and then to allow for costs that we actually saved while the building's been closed. So two years ago, when we presented our two-year plan to council, we outlined the ways in which we were going to reduce expenses to offset the lost revenue while the building was closed. Now with this new two-year budget plan, we're not only proposing new revenue, but we're also bringing online expenditures that we haven't had in the past and higher expenditures than we had previously, since essentially we have a brand-new building that we want to be sure to keep to the highest standard so the community can enjoy that. We have additional custodial, security, and landscape costs as other examples of where we'll be looking at contract services to support the building. So looking at our general fund expenses by category, it's generally a 3% change from the fiscal year 19 revised budget across our divisions, essentially going from just under 17 million to just under 17.5 million. And you can see in the change, some of that comes in salaries and benefit changes, and that comes from added hourly staff and then also the refunding of positions that we left vacant while the building was closed. And then some supplies and services. When it's offset against this year's budget, it shows a little bit of change and transfers out, but those are really one, one-time arrangements and not something that, that makes a difference for the 2020 budget. When we look at our expenses by division, you can see that overall, again, it's about 3.3% for the entire division, of which the majority of the increase in expenses is in the recreation division and largely around the fact that we are reopening the Cabrillo Pavilion, and a lot of those expenses are housed there. Specifically, want to point out a few things about our different divisions. So the Parks Division has a proposed budget of just under 8 million. But when you pull it apart and really look at what happens in our Parks Division, we maintain street trees, we maintain city medians and parkways, we provide park ranger security services for the school district, we maintain the Sheffield Open Space and waterfront parking landscape under contract from the waterfront department and the public works department. So when we just look at park operations, the amount of funding of that budget that gets spent in city parks, it's 6.3 million dollars. When we look at our recreation division, it has an expense budget of just under 8 million as well. And this pie chart gives you a sense of how that breaks out and where our programs, more of our funds are expended, particularly as it relates to youth programs and sport programs, such as aquatics and youth activities. But then we also expend funds in our neighborhood and outreach services to provide services to folks on the east side, the west side, and at the Davis Center. We look at our revenue by budget. This gives you a sense of where it all comes in. So when it comes to recreation, we have revenue in our facility rentals. The restaurant concession, that's the proposed revenue for the Cabrillo Pavilion. Arts and craft show, leases, and recreation programming fees. And then 26% interest city service. That essentially accounts for the work that we do with funds from other departments or transfers, such as utility users tax for street trees. And then revenue by division, as this table shows, most of that revenue does come in through our recreation programs and services. Parks Division revenue, as I mentioned, these are the different areas where the revenue comes in by program, whether it's medians and parkways and contracts, grounds and facility maintenance, or forestry. And then recreation, again, when we look at the revenue associated with our recreation division, as you can see, facility rentals and special events, aquatics, youth activities, neighborhood and outreach services, and active adults are all between half a million and just over 1.1 million, with smaller amounts of revenue coming through our tennis programs and our sports programs, for a total of 4.1 million. Fees and charges, so this is where the revenue comes from. We have about 186 recreation program and facility fee areas across the department, largely, mostly in recreation. We have one in parks, which has to do with street removal, street tree removal, setback removal permits. For the proposed or the recommended 2020 budget, we have 22 new fees. And generally, those are around new, new activities that we're doing. We're proposing to discontinue for, eliminate or modify another 22 and have moderate increases or decreases, in some cases, to about 60. Every year, the department staff do a pretty thorough assessment and undertake a number of considerations when it comes to setting our fees or recommending fees. We look at trying to standardize them where we can, and next year, we're planning to do that with our nonprofit profit facility rental rates. But then also balancing cost recovery, maximizing participation. Who's our target market, you know, youth versus adults? I don't even know how many fees we have for a senior program, not many. And then also the local competition, how we fare, because we're not the only player in the marketplace when it comes to recreation programs and services. And that's a good thing, because it's great to have diversity and lots of options for Santa Barbara's families. Some examples of our fee changes. I mentioned that we are planning to reduce some of our fees. An example of that is our nonprofit facility rental, trying to align the resident and non-resident and then provide a discount to a nonprofit over a resident fee, since nonprofits are usually providing a great community service, so we want to be able to support that. Indoor and outdoor rental, facility rental fees. Cost increases really related to our costs of doing business. And similarly, sport field rental fees, recovering higher turf renovation water costs. Our annual tennis fees are also proposed to go up along with those pickleball permit fees. And, and while the slide says 51 to 57%, which seems like a rather large number, when it actually comes down to dollars and cents, it means for a senior to play pickleball for the entire year, it would go from $35 to $55. And for an adult, from $39 to $59. When you actually, it seems like a big percentage, but for the entire year, the opportunity to play pickleball for $59, we consider is pretty, pretty good deal. We have a great relationship with our new pickleball group that is very active at municipal tennis. So it's a great addition to that facility. Creo recreation classes, cost increases related to both, you know, our instructors are on contract to us, so they will come to us with their desire to raise fees. And so it happens through our fee process with council. And then the annual arts and craft show membership shows a recommended 3% fee increase, which takes it from $265 a year to $272 a year. So they are quite incremental. And then nonprofit lease rates from $1.36 per square foot to $1.39 per square foot. The most significant change in our fees really is the introduction of a number of new fees with the reopening of the Cabrillo Pavilion. So when we had our budget proposal to council last year, we actually reduced, we eliminated those old fees because the building was closed. There was no point in having fees for a building one couldn't use. We put together as part of our business plan a series of fees that we felt were appropriate for the use of the facilities, depending on the day of use and the type of use, and did an extensive amount of research on other buildings and areas that people rent for social events, for meetings, for cultural events, with the idea that our goal is always to make sure that we have a competitive and affordable opportunity for Santa Barbara residents. We also have, will have a beautiful, brand-new building that we anticipate will be highly popular. So popular that our prime time day will be Saturday, and always has been Saturday, I think it's probably Saturday everywhere, with discounted rates on Fridays and Sundays. So if you wanted to save some money, you could have your event on a Friday or a Sunday instead. And then similarly, Monday through Thursday, again, the goal here is to provide a range of options for a potential renter and to try to fill the building throughout the week. And so for someone who's perfectly happy with having their event on a Thursday, then it's a great deal for them as well. Downstairs, at our ocean level, which was our new term for the lower level of the Cabrillo Pavilion, we have a multipurpose room that has, provides opportunities for also private rentals as well as programs and classes. And then we have the fitness room, which is basically the former gym plus the staff offices are now a larger fitness room. And we are looking to bring in trainers that actually would pay a lease rate to us to do some training while still also offering the opportunity for drop-in use and classes. So really trying to diversify the different things that can happen down there. The people that go there between 6:00 and 8:00 a.m. are not likely to be the same group of folks that are there at 10:30 and 12, because maybe they don't have to go to work anymore. And then again, anticipating that folks that are part of, still in the working world, might be there between 5:00 and 8:00, whereas everybody else may have gone, gone home. And then also the idea that we do also have young families. So it could be an opportunity for young families and young children to take advantage of the facility as well. We have daily entry fees and passes that we're proposing for the Cabrillo Pavilion, and these are really tiered off what we already do at Los Baños. So depending on your age and how often you go, if you just want a day pass because you're visiting Santa Barbara and you want the whole family to be able to shower and change and go to the beach and do fun things, be $15. But if you go in and out of the building on a regular basis and you want to, you know, be there four times a week or three times a week, you'd get a pass, because it would actually be very, very affordable to do that. So that essentially is a nutshell of our fees. We have a lot in our fees and charges, which is part of your budget book. And just want to switch quickly over to our performance measures. We have many, many, many performance measures. We did an extensive overhaul of them in fiscal year 19. We're not proposing any major changes for fiscal year 20. So really, we just want to point out a few things and be certainly be happy to answer any questions that, that council has. Some of the things is looking at our annual targets to really capture our program trends, and you can see that in our budget pages. Prioritizing tree planting, that's one thing we, we indicated was a high priority last year, and we want to keep that up as long as we're able to, to keep moving that forward. The Cabrillo Pavilion will reopen, so we anticipate. We, we've done so much work on our business plan, there'll still be a little trial and error, but we'll be, it'll be a high priority for the department, for that building to succeed. We do a lot of data tracking for our marketing initiatives, and we want to enhance those, because it really tells a story about what's going on and who's using our programs and services. And then in Parma Park, we have an annual work plan, and, and we've done it for many years, but we've actually never tracked it as part of our P3, so we're adding that as a way to, to balance out all the different things that we do. Very briefly, the miscellaneous grants fund, the funds that you see here are actually already incorporated in our regular budget pages that you see. So I just want to point out the types of programs that are funded through that fund. Our adapted programs, we have our summer fund recreation program, our agreement with Santa Barbara Unified School District for AOK program, things like the Children's Fest of Parade grants that we get for Santa Barbara Arts Alliance or the Youth Council, Job Apprentice Program, the Russ Morrison Junior Golf Program. And then we also have some park-related ones, including funds that we get from Santa Barbara Beautiful for tree planting, work that we do on the Front Country Trails, and then also Parma Park. And then very briefly, general fund capital, before I turn it over for golf. Our capital improvement program for the whole five-year program indicates we have just under $100 million of projects we would love to do in city parks and facilities. And they address our community buildings, our sports facilities, our historic parks. We really focus on high use and public benefit as priorities. And, and also our facility condition, safety, and access concerns. We hear a lot from the community about what they like, so we try to be as responsible, responsive as possible. And then also the reinvestment for the long term. When we move forward with a project with council approval, the goal is, is that this is a place we don't need to come back to for another 20 years. We do it all, and then we go on, because it's an opportunity just to complete one and move on to the next. For the fiscal year 20 projects, we have a number of projects that are underway or will be completed this year. So we looked at where we would be continuing key priority projects that advance our initiatives and the community's initiatives. And so as a result, there's four projects that are proposed for additional funds. Before I just outline them, I, I would like to point out that we completed one this fiscal year, the Creo Ballpark renovation. 10 years in the making, but it's done, and it's very popular, and we're very happy with it. The playground and site improvements at municipal tennis were also completed. We're about to complete the McKenzie Off Leash Dog Area. We have a few things that we're working through, but if not in May, then June, we will have our ribbon cutting ceremony. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the Cabrillo Pavilion will reopen after being closed for 21 months, and another one of those 10-year projects. But it's, it's going to be really wonderful for the community when it's ready. So the projects we're also still working on this year include renovation of the Louise Lowry Davis Center, repair to Thousand Steps, renovation of Bonnet Park, our goal to install a splash playground at West Beach, the two master plans that council approved in January. Work is continuing on those. And then looking just ahead at the next year, proposing to continue to fund those four key projects to take them to the next level in terms of design and permitting and readying them for construction for when that opportunity presents itself. So with that, it shows that we're proposing about $900,000. And these funds would be used to, and the Bonnet Park field and access improvements would help fund some of the construction improvements. We have a $300,000 community development block grant. We combine that with this $150,000 and address access and restroom improvements off the bat. Dwight Murphy, we're ready to start the next phase of design, preliminary design. And we'll have before council, hopefully by the end of June, memo U and memorandum of understanding with the Gwendolyn Strong Foundation for Cost Share on both design and construction of that. And then Ortega Park renovation, we are working on preliminary design right now. And we anticipate, having made a tremendous amount of progress by the end of this fiscal year, this will take us into some more final plan and, and construction documents. And then similarly, the West Beach Splash Playground, we've had enough funds to complete preliminary design. Will be ready, hopefully we will have our design approval from historic landmarks and be going through and have completed the coastal development permit process so that we can do final plans for West Beach in 2020. And with that, that concludes the presentation on the general fund. At the mayor's desire, we can stop there or continue on through the golf. At the mayor's desire, we can stop there or continue on through the golf fund.
Thanks. Well, I do have a couple of questions at this point, and thanks so much for the presentation so far. So the Cabrillo Pavilion, it's, eventually it'll be a revenue generator again? And that sounds so vulgar. It's such a beautiful place. I don't want to look at it just as a, a means to make us money, but this is a budget hearing. So we, it's more on the expenditure side right now, right? So, but when, when do you think people will start using it, and it'll pay for itself and maybe more?
Madam Mayor, members of council, we, I'm going to say this, it hasn't happened yet, but the plan is to actually start marketing the building in May, with the idea that what we're marketing essentially is the rental facility, since people are lining up, we have a list, people that want to secure their spot for 2020. We're going to be conservative and, and sort of start at the latter half, the, the end of 19, 2019, knowing that as we get closer and closer to opening, we can open more dates and want to capture the holiday season. And then similarly, as we move forward with our marketing initiatives, we'll be communicating to, to members of the public and our, and our stakeholders, the things that they can do and the opportunities they have in the downstairs. We're working closely with the restaurant operator, who's currently developing their plans and pulling their building permits, with the idea that we will open concurrently. And the first year, because it will be 10, eight, excuse me, eight, maybe nine months' worth of revenue, we've been conservative, so we anticipate there will be some under, support from the general fund to keep the building going for that first initial, and then as, as we get a sense of how revenues are going, when we go into 2020, we'll have a better idea. One of the things that we are planning to do, which we didn't have, you know, the cost to operate the building is more than it was before, for a variety of reasons, the systems that we have in place, and the expectations that we keep it at, at a state much higher than it was before it closed. And then also considering the contract services that we will need. So in addition to landscape contract services, to make sure the landscape's in good shape, we are proposing security services to help us manage the exterior, since that's a concern of our public. And then also, whenever anybody uses the building for 12 month, 12 hours a day, we don't have city custodial staff waiting around, so we also contract, for example, for custodial services outside the normal city business hours. So we're, we'll be monitoring it very closely on a monthly basis, anticipate that what, that things, once the restaurant gets going, we'll have a better sense of how revenues look.
Okay. And then looking, thank you, at your, I guess the, the very last slide before this, number 34. So the, the dollar amounts that you have there, that's what's needed, or what? Oh, that's what it's budgeted for, for the new? What, what do those numbers mean?
Madam Mayor, members of council, these are the recommended funding amounts for these four projects. These funding amounts will get us one step closer in completing our design plans and permitting process for them. With the exception of the Bonnet, funding amount would go toward construction of some of the improvements in the park next year.
Okay. That was it for me. Mr. Dominguez, you have questions at this point? There's more to come, but go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Slide 19, I had a question about neighborhood outreach services. Looking at the slide and then also looking in our budget book, one of the things that struck me was the number of authorized positions and then the salaries. So there's $700,000 in salaries for four authorized positions, which struck me. It's, it's higher than some of the other units, and I'm guessing because these are management positions.
What page are you on, Mr. Dominguez? Are you in the?
G 261.
Thanks.
And the other thing is, under expenditure, there's only two line items, $700,000 is in salaries and benefits, and then there's $566,000 in supplies and services. So there's not a lot of detail, or I'm, I'm not sure what those are, maybe those are And when I'm looking at these numbers, I'm looking at it also with slide 20, the next slide, where you break down the revenue per, I guess, sub-department or group, and there's not really a corresponding revenue that goes along with the neighborhood outreach services. And looking at the types of services, there, I understand it, particularly being in the nonprofit sector myself, a lot of what these projects are, are nonprofit, or what would typically be nonprofit. And it looks like in some cases, they may even indicate their contracts with nonprofits. So what, what is kind of the, how you vision neighborhood and outreach services in, in the greater department?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, to, to start, we have, at the top of my head, four permanent staff in that section. So we have a supervisor, two recreation coordinators, three recreation coordinators, and a administrative specialist. We also have a lot of hourly staff hours that provide services. And then the, the performance measures that we have, a lot of what we do in neighborhood and outreach services is collaborations, and collaborations with different community organizations. So even though we are not funding the service, so the Community Action Commission might be funding the service, or the Food Bank might be doing that, we are facilitating it and providing the facility for it. That's where I can start answering your question, and I would turn to Rich Hannah, since he's turned the page more quickly than I have, to further explain that program.
Mr. Hannah.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, so I think the other part of your question was the supplies and services line item. So essentially, the supplies and services line item looks at the contract cleaning that we do for all of our special event rentals, so it includes all the custodial for event post-clean-up, also includes just the general support for the community garden program, the youth council, money allocated to the Franklin Center, West Side Neighborhood Center, and then also the Davis Center for just general operations.
So building maintenance fees for the Davis Center, for example, would be coming out of that $566,000?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, that's correct. So when you see all of that, it includes all the allocated costs that are assigned. So we have three buildings, the Franklin Center, the West Side Center, the Davis Center. So anything that's part of the city's allocated cost system would be included in that budget expenditure.
And are they, when it comes, for example, to the facilities and event management, they're not then expensed out to the budget? Because I know, and if you go to slide 20, you're receiving 23% of your revenue budget. The lavender on the top left is revenue from those facilities, or I guess maybe part of that through Davis and the East Side. Those probably aren't your most, your highest revenue-producing facilities, but does that go into that revenue line item?
So this, yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, this pie chart shows the facility rental revenue we have for all of our facilities. So the neighborhood and outreach services buildings that we do receive some revenue for, for rentals, is in that number. And you're correct, it's not a large amount.
And what are you doing to track the, the outcomes?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, if I could just ask, to track the outcomes of our facility rental successes?
No more for the outreach services, because your facilities rental program, that, that is a very big part of Parks and Rec, and what I was going to ask about that is, maybe, do you have a separate manager for facilities rentals? And I guess I could go back to the management chart.
Madam Mayor, Council, Councilmember Dominguez, we do have a vacant manager position that's focused on community services, special events, and facilities. That position has been unfunded while the Cabrillo Pavilion's been closed as a way to reduce operating expenses for the department, but we hope to fill that in the first quarter of fiscal year 2020.
And does that manager also cover neighborhood and outreach services?
That's correct.
Okay. And you had said there were, there's a supervisor, three of one position, and then one admin, so that, is there five positions in neighborhood and outreach services?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I, I double-checked our budget book, and actually, there is a supervisor, two recreation coordinators, and an administrative specialist. We have staff that are housed in different budget programs, but they might work cross-departmentally. So it, it's sometimes when I say, oh, it's a recreation coordinator, they might be helping reserve facilities at the neighborhood and outreach, at the West Side Center or the Franklin Center, but they're budgeted in special events and facilities because they also work in other facilities. So there's a, there's kind of a sharing of duties in our department by virtue of just the necessity of, of having enough staff to provide services.
And so to go back to, to the other question, when you're looking at these programs that are very similar to nonprofit programs, or even the ones that are nonprofits, how are you measuring the outcomes? So when a nonprofit comes to our community development and seeks a block grant, for example, they have to go through a whole process where they talk about the outcomes they're seeking, and we line it up with the outcomes we're seeking as a city. Do you have a process like that? Because what it comes down to is oftentimes comparing apples and oranges and pineapples and bananas. So how do you know if, if the partnership, for example, with Community Action Commission, after several years, is living up to its goals versus the program with the Santa Barbara Youth Arts Alliance, or the Volunteer Income Tax Assistant Program?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, that is a question we ask on a regular basis. We have cosponsorship agreements with various organizations, and as part of those, for all of the organizations that operate programs and services in, in our facilities or that we collaborate with. And we have expectations for, for what services they're providing, what audience they are serving, and whether that's consistent with the mission of the department and the mission of the city, not just Parks and Recreation. And we have had instances where programs have lagged, and they haven't been as successful for any number of reasons. And when that happens, we work closely with the service provider to find ways to improve the program, particularly if we see it having a great nexus. And so examples of that are the senior meal lunch program. We want people to come have a free lunch, we want the lunch to be good, and we want everybody to coexist well. And, and so part of it is just looking at the number of families that are served and the number of people that are served, and we keep data on that. The performance measures give you a sense of the type of data that we keep. Similarly, for our youth apprentice programs, our Youth Arts Alliance program, that's in-house. So we know how many kids we have coming to the Franklin Center, we know how many kids are participating in the art program, we know how many kids are doing the youth culinary arts program, which is at both the West Side Center and the Franklin Center. And we really look at, I mean, when you look at the, the programs and what it costs to provide them, it's actually a great deal when we collaborate with nonprofits, because we, they operate on a thin margin, and we're operating on a, on a fairly tight margin as well.
Great, thank you. And I'm asking these questions in the vein of how do we increase exceptional successes? And, you know, so part of that is how do you measure success? How do you measure outcomes? Because I do think cities have a particular perspective. Some people may ask the question, why are cities involved in this type of stuff to begin with? But I think as long as we identify why we are and what niche we're seeking out, I think it's, it's perfectly appropriate to do this and then expand as we can and take things out that don't seem to be serving that mission. So the, the final question I have is related to, to park security. What can we do in this budget process to improve park security and improve the, the sense of well-being of our park users? What can council do for the department to address the concerns that you, the Parks and Rec Commission had a report on last week, for example?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, council members, there's, we try to employ a number of different methods to increase security and people's sense of safety when they go to a park system. We have talked about and identified the need for additional security, particularly at the Cabrillo Pavilion, so we're budgeting for that. So our revenue at the building is going to help pay for that. We have three park rangers. We've talked about, would there be an advantage of having another park ranger? Where would that park ranger lie? We do our best to coordinate particularly around the beginning of the summer months with the police department and some of our park areas where we need to change some habits and some use patterns in order to provide for the young children that will be there. And then again, the, the council members, council support for the park improvement projects that we have. Cabrillo Ball Field's a prime example of a location that was really not in great shape many years ago. Took a while to get where we are, but we succeeded. Similarly, looking at our other locations and how we can make improvements that make the parks more welcoming and easier to use. Internally, we're constantly talking about how we try to bring more people to the park, and we balance that with, if you have more kids playing soccer in a park, that means they're using the turf more, which means we need to maintain the turf more. So we're always, we're doing that back and forth, back and forth, of trying to make sure that we provide as welcoming environment as possible. We just can't be everywhere all the time, and our park staff have a, have a route that they do every day and certain tasks that they do every day. We don't have a designated staff person for every park that we have that's there all day. And even if we did, I'm not sure that would be that much different.
And would it help, then, to have an extra ranger? And I have to say, just, this is anecdotal, so it's the weakest type of evidence, but the three times I've seen city rangers were at, at special events, at 10K, and then at Earth Day. And so I've actually not seen them in a park, and you know, I've gone to Ortega Park several times. We've had community events where we've talked about Ortega Park, and 95% of the time I've gone to that park, I've witnessed criminal activity, and I've, I've never seen a ranger there. The police have been there a number of times, and I'm not sure what the role of the ranger would be vis-à-vis the police, but would it help to have an extra ranger in the budget?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, I can, I can tell you what the park rangers do do, and sometimes lots of us don't see it because it happens early in the morning or during the daytime. We have them going to certain facilities, particularly prior to a rental, to make sure it's clean, or that people who are there leave. We also have them, for example, go to a park where we know there's going to be a special event, and we also know that there's other activities that might be going on there to try to segregate the activities so that the event-goers have a place where they can congregate and, and have their festival. They provide a lot of support to our park staff, and when it comes to the cleanups that we have to do in our park system and some of the individuals that we have to deal with, they help that human, with that human interaction between our staff and whoever might be in the park exhibiting behaviors that aren't that positive. So those are the types of things that they do. They do also do, and it, and it's hard to quantify the value of it, but they go around town and check on what's going on, and if they see something going on, they, they often have to call the police for backup because they aren't police officers, but they're sometimes the first eyes and ears in certain locations. So the idea of, of the staffing question is just bandwidth, you know, just, you know, have, being able to have someone on staff seven days a week, and sometimes in twos and threes, when you only have three people, it's harder to schedule them all. Now, but nobody wants to work both weekend days, and then you have nobody there on Tuesday, and you have a facility that's rented that morning, and, you know, so it's really, we're just trying to manage. A number, we have a number of places we have to manage, so that's part of it as well.
So it sounds like from that answer, it might be more efficient if, if the goal is to have an increased security presence to use a private security company to target a certain park. If there's a problem, let's just say at 3 o'clock every day at a certain park, maybe it makes sense to have an hourly security contractor go to the park and intervene rather than a ranger.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, we've done that as well in the past, particularly at Chase Palm Park, particularly around times when we've had more events and festivals and, and more significant issues. And that's why we're proposing at the Cabrillo Pavilion, we want to explore seeing how it might work there. And it, and in talking to security services, they don't go and stay there all day, they come and go and they move around. So if you're at a shopping mall and you see security officers, they're not necessarily there all day, they have a route that they go through. And so that's the type of thing that we're looking at, and we want to see how it works at the pavilion. The extent to which we might be able to do it elsewhere will really depend on the need. We'd have to come back to you with some more specific information if you wanted us to go down that path.
Ms. Antle, you have something to add?
Madam Mayor, I would just say also, in answer to Councilmember Dominguez-
Madam Mayor, I would just say also in answer to Councilmember Dominguez's question, if you ask any of the department heads if they could use another staff member, they will all answer yes, yes, but it's a matter of balancing all of those requests during the budget process. So that's why you probably heard Director Zachary not answering yes or no. But I can tell you generally everyone would say yes.
Understood. And so some of the options for security are private security or a park ranger who would be a city employee. And there's other lights on, Mr. Dominguez, and there's still golf in creeks. I know Mr. Rouse needs to leave at 4:10. So, um, did you, did you have more?
I'll wrap up. Because, because we did have the report come from, from the Parks and Rec Committee on, on security in the parks. So I don't see anything in your budget unless I missed it, which deals with that. So I'm guessing then that your, the hope then relies on other departments to intercede or intervene. You're not doing anything necessarily within your park. I mean, I know there's constant things like environmental measures to, you know, make things more visible, but in terms of any, any measures or projects you're adding into the budget to deal with that, there's none at this time.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the, the one thing that, that is being added and it's actually being housed in the Environmental Services Department is additional funds to support some of the areas that are more significant in terms of cleanup requirements. And so what that does do and can do for the department, and it's $20,000 for parks, is it means our staff can go back, in some cases, to working on the park versus cleaning up the park. So there's a, there's a direct advantage. We anticipate an advantage from that happening.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks. Ms. Sneddon, you have questions on this section so far?
Just a couple. Just for an idea, how much does a park ranger cost versus private security? What would that look like?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Sneddon, we did a quick analysis of this in anticipation of this question. The first year cost is just over $130,000. That includes one additional vehicle. We're able to accommodate three rangers with the vehicles we have if we were to go to a fourth vehicle. So there's a one-time cost. And then essentially year two and beyond, it's just under $100,000 for the staffing, the uniforms, and then just the general operation of housing the ranger program.
And, and that would be the same cost or a little bit more than the security option? And which would be the preferred option if we were to recommend that?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Sneddon, I believe the amount of money we're holding for the pavilion private security is $40,000. And that is, as Ms. Zachary explained, is a service that'll come in in the morning, vary their hours, come back during the day, and not really be dedicated to any other area of the city other than just the pavilion. So I don't know that I can make a, an easy comparison between what we're doing at the pavilion in terms of private security compared to the benefit of having a park ranger that goes around all 60 Parks and Recreation facilities.
And provides other support as well?
Provides other supports, correct.
Okay. And then I just had a question about, in the measurable objectives, it's, it's in different areas, but it'll, for instance, program capacity in youth camps, classes, and then the, it's 70%? And some, none of them are 100%? They go from like 70, 75%? And I was just wondering what that looks like? Does that mean an individual class? Is it 70% capacity? Or does that mean of all the classes, 70% are full?
So Madam Mayor and Councilmember Sneddon, it's basically the capacity for the entire program. So if we're doing 70%, so in each of the individual programs, the sports section may measure program capacity for the free after-school youth sports program. For summer camps, it's the entire camps irrespective of which program houses them. We would like to be able to achieve 100%, obviously, but there's a lot of competition out there. We kind of picked 70%. And then every year we're suspect to, you know, if a program doesn't succeed, we have to pull that off. So we used to report specifically on hard numbers of youth served and we felt like if a camp didn't succeed or something changed in the environment, or we had a bad inclement fire season, those numbers, we would never achieve them. So occupancy by percentage is more achievable from the perspective of, you know, you're basing it off the number of sessions offered.
Understood. And does that also mean then you would have room for expansion if there was demand or that, that you would have 30% capacity available?
So Madam Mayor and Councilmember Sneddon, yes, we always have room for growth in our summer programs and our activities. It just depends on whether we have the facilities to accommodate them. So in some cases, we partner with other providers, these school district facilities, or we're just the conduit for programs that occur off-site. If we can bring on more programming and we have the facilities to accommodate it, we're always looking to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To piggyback off their question about security, instead of hiring a person, have you thought about video surveillance? With the technology nowadays, there's, there's face recognition. So if there's a, a batch of bad characters that keep harassing a certain park, the technology is there so that the authorities can be notified that these same people keep coming to the same park. I know on the west side, the residents near Bonnet Park have asked me to inquire about video surveillance for that specific park.
So Madam Mayor and Councilmember Gutierrez, so we do actually currently have security cameras at Ortega Park. That's the only park that we have in our inventory with security cameras. And they have been successful at times to go back and review incidences that have already occurred. We actually do also have video surveillance cameras at the Westside Neighborhood Center. So they're often used to refer to patterns or behavior that's already occurred. To expand the video camera process, it's my understanding one of two things. One is if you're watching it in real time, you still require somebody to actually be monitoring it to then report that to the police department. And then it's also my understanding there's rules and regulations around the storage of the data and how that's out, or how that's managed. And I don't know all the details to that, but expanding the camera program would require us to look at how we manage the data that's stored on the cameras.
Yeah, if you could do a little more research on that, I know that the residents on the west side would appreciate that. When it came to the amount of money that was spent on fuel, was that just specifically for vehicles? Or do we still have tools that are running off of fuel? Or are they battery-powered?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, we, it's mostly vehicles. We certainly have equipment that uses fuel as well. But if, think about where you have to go throughout the city on a daily basis, maintaining a park, driving a vehicle, trimming a tree, it's really mostly the transportation costs of the staff to the site where, where they're working.
Any plans to, to wean off of gas-powered tools anytime soon?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Gutierrez, we currently, I would say, we're weaning off of all of our small hand-powered tools to go to batteries. So weed whips, blowers, all of those things, we're moving from gas to, to electric or other options. When it gets to like a, a field mower or a mower that's operated by staff, we're constantly looking at opportunities there. The, the products that are out and available right now haven't demonstrated that they're able to be sustained for long periods of time. But as new pieces of equipment come on that are larger in scale, we have every, you know, every desire to actually transition to more battery or other powered sources.
Thank you. Good work. And when it comes to, yeah, I'm not sure if this is appropriate, the time, time to ask, but when it comes to the pesticides being used in our parks, is there any way we cannot use pesticides in our parks?
You're talking about Roundup? We've been getting a lot of emails about Roundup. Ms. Zachary, thanks.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, we have had a lot of discussions since the recent media, media over Roundup. And those discussions have been interdepartmental. So the city's IPM program addresses the whole city in terms of where glyphosate is used. And then also started discussions with our Integrated Pest Management Advisory Committee, which is appointed by the Parks and Recreation Commission. What we'd like to do is spend a little time coming up with some alternative proposals for council's consideration and, and sort of present the, the pros and cons to everything we, we, we use and why we use it, and how much we use and, and where we use it, and be able to give you some recommendations about where we would go from here. There are situations in the city where it's used for different reasons than, than some of the ones that neighbors have been recently communicating about, including the airport being a critical location, including our creek restoration projects. We've gotten ahead of Arundo and invasive species through very judicious applications, very careful applications that otherwise we'd never achieve. So it's a matter of talking the pros and cons and are there alternative materials? So we'd like to bring that back to you with some recommendations if, if that works.
I think we would welcome that discussion.
Thank you, that's all I got.
So before we go to golf and creeks, I just would like to ask if you're researching security measures. What's been working in homelessness is not a uniformed officer because they cost so much, but to go to a community service officer, kind of, the police have volunteers in policing, the gray shirt, there's the red shirt, they're paid through the Public Works Department. So if you would add to your list of possible monitoring and security, the gray shirts, I, with their insignia, I think they look very official and law enforcement-like. And if they could help on a, in a economical way, then let's add that into the mix of looking at ways to monitor the parks, please. So let's go to golf. Tiger Woods is playing well again, right? And I know Mr. Samario's theory is that everybody's excited about Tiger and that might increase golf play.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. Nicole Parmeling, Business Manager with Parks and Rec. And also in attendance with us today, we have Tom Bugbee, who is the VP of Operations with the Golf Management Company, Courseco. So I wanted to mention that. All right, so first here, I wanted to start off just with a quick overview and as a reminder, as Ms. Zachary mentioned earlier, the Golf Fund is an enterprise fund, meaning it receives no general fund support and it operates sort of as its own entity. And the mission of Santa Barbara Golf Club is that we are dedicated to providing residents and visitors an exceptional and affordable golfing experience in a friendly, inclusive environment for socializing and enjoying nature. So next, we can take a look at some of our budget highlights. We have a three-pronged financial strategy. First, providing excellent value for our golfers in the community. Second, strengthening our financial position by building reserves over time, and yet also balancing our fiscal priorities to ensure that we're investing sufficient capital to support the future of the golf course. And how do we achieve this? First, by providing excellent customer service and making continuous improvements to the course conditions. Also by building and maintaining significant areas of infrastructure. And finally, making moderate increases to certain fees only when required. So here you can see a breakdown of where the golf course derives its revenues. The largest component, which is green fees, makes up about 59% of the total revenues received at the golf course. And these are simply the fees that golfers pay to play on the course itself. Next would be cart fees. And this is a more discretionary cost for those golfers who choose to rent a golf cart. And it makes up about 17% of the revenues. So together, these two areas comprise just about three-quarters of all the revenue generated. And then in addition, you can see the other areas include selling merchandise, the driving range, practice lessons, restaurant concessions. And that is basically the rent that the city receives from Mulligan's Cafe and tournament banquet sales of food and beverages. And then on the right-hand side, this line chart shows how greens fees revenues have changed over the past decade. And as a reminder, that is the 59%, the biggest piece of the pie. And so overall, we've seen modest growth since 2010. This would be a positive trend line, albeit with some down years here and there, and this is the trend that we expect to continue. So here we have the recommended revenue for FY '20 compared with where at mid-year we projected to end this current fiscal year. And here, revenue is split into three main categories. First off, we have golf, golf operations, which is the most significant piece. And it's derived from the contract with Courseco. And for this piece, we're proposing 3.6% growth compared to this year's projection. Next, concession revenue from Mulligan's Cafe is proposed at 2% growth. And then overall, this leads to recommending an increase of just about $100,000, which is 3.5% overall growth. And it's also important to note that although we are projecting growth from where we hope to end this year, it's actually a slight decline of about $23,000 from the FY '19 adopted budget, as you can see. And this is in response to reviewing a number of years of revenue where we have, you know, maybe not met budget. And so now we're taking a more conservative approach in light of not seeing the gains in rounds that we had previously anticipated. And so while we don't necessarily foresee consistent, significant year-over-year growth in terms of rounds, golf overall is stable, which is great news. And our expense budget also provides some flexibility in terms of being able to make cuts where needed if the revenues don't come in as we project. So additionally, we have a few proposed fee changes for this year, including the examples you can see up here on the slide that we wanted to call out. First and foremost, the preferred club card is probably the most notable change, which is why we wanted to call it out here. And this is the, the first increase since the club card program was started with Courseco, a $10 increase from $69 to $79 a year. And with that, we are also adding incentives to increase the value for the golfers, such as $5 off of certain greens fees, preferred only pricing specials, and $5 off savings on special events like global events and masters events and such. And then in January, most 18-hole greens fees will increase by $1, and that is except for the juniors rate, which will remain the same. And this occurs in January just for consistency with other local courses and, and when we've applied the, the increases in the past. And then additionally, there are a few other modest fee increases, most of which also correspond in increases in value to the golfer. And the majority of the fees are proposed to stay this, to stay the same. And with these changes, Santa Barbara Golf Club is still by far the best value golf in the local area. And I wanted to mention also that the Golf Advisory Committee supports the fees and changes, proposed changes to the fees and charges. All right, so next we have a breakdown of expenses by category. And in salaries and benefits, there is somewhat of a decrease, $8,400 compared with last year's budget, but this is actually an increase from where we projected to end this year. And then in supplies and services, we're proposing a 2.5% increase. And this is by far the largest line item, as you can see. And it's where all of the operating costs for maintenance and the pro-shop reside. It's also reflecting the increased costs of water, as Ms. Zachary alluded to earlier, along with maintenance costs to enhance playability and course conditions for the golfers. And so this overall is a resulting 1.1% increase proposed in FY '20 expenses. So taking a look at how the proposed budget impacts our reserves, in FY '18, the Golf Fund had a closing balance of just over $100,000. As of mid-year, we projected to end this year with a positive contribution to reserves resulting in a fund balance of $252,000. And the proposed budgets in FY '20 and '21 would each add about another $134 each, $134,000, excuse me, to reserves, resulting in a positive fund balance of $521,000 by the end of FY '21. And so this, this is making good progress towards the city's policy level, which for the Golf Fund is about $900,000. And so overall, our financial strategy is to make sure that we get to that policy level over time while also continuing to make the needed investments in capital, to maintain the course quality, and provide a high-value experience for golfers. And here is a proposed capital budget for FY '20. So the first on the list, the Players Improvement Fund, as you may remember, allocates, the, the PIF Fund allocates a dollar from every paid round of golf to support projects that are identified by the Golf Advisory Committee. And you can just see here some of the other upcoming projects. A big priority for the coming year in terms of course improvements would be rebuilding the number nine green. And then additionally, making needed improvements to irrigation and other infrastructure and upgrading maintenance equipment where needed to a total of $200,000. upgrading maintenance equipment where needed to a total of $247,000. And then finally, in line with what Ms. Zachary discussed regarding the general fund performance measures, accordingly, there are no substantive changes to the performance measures in golf for FY '20, but we're just going to continue focusing on continuing to grow greens and carts fees revenues, managing our water usage, excelling in customer service, and attracting and retaining our preferred cardholders. And that concludes my section of the presentation, and I can turn it over to Cameron Benson, unless there are any questions.
Questions on the Golf Fund to Ms. Parmally? Are you new then?
I am, yes, Madam Mayor and council members. I've been with Parks and Rec for about three months now.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Well, I'll ask, so the Montecito Country Club is open, I think, and were they boasting that they had improved, it's more challenging and fun now because they reconfigured their greens? Is that right?
Madam Mayor and council members, yes, that's correct. It is open, and from what I understand, we have, you know, a little bit of a different target audience per se, and we don't necessarily foresee a huge decline based upon Montecito recently opening, but that'll have to sort of be determined.
So, but Glen Annie Golf Course, that's a competitor of ours, I'm just trying to get a picture of, okay.
Yes.
Would the Golf Concessionaire have anything to say? I didn't catch your name, sorry. Okay, and there's no question, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll go to the creeks' presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Good afternoon, my name is Cameron Benson, I'm the Creeks Division Manager, and I will be presenting the proposed FY '20, '20 and '21 budgets for the Creeks Division. As most of you know, the Creeks Division is funded primarily through Measure B, which is a voter-approved 2% hotel bed tax. It was passed in November of 2000, that created a special fund, and the use of the fund is restricted for uses to improve the quality of stormwater and other surface waters and to carry out creek restoration improvements within the city. Jumping into the numbers, I'll start with the revenue. Our projected total revenue for FY '20 is about $4.3 million. Most of that comes from Measure B, which is projected to be relatively flat as compared to the current year budget. We have about a $50,000 increase from the adopted FY '19 budget, slight increase in interest, funding, and an overall increase from the current year projected revenue to the FY '20 revenue of about 3.6%. Moving to the expenditures, most of the, essentially what we're looking at is a status quo budget. We're looking at a total expense budget in FY '20 of $4.3 million. Slight increases in salaries and benefits, supplies and services costs are essentially flat from the current year. What I wanted to point out on this slide is our transfer to our capital program this year has a fairly significant decrease by $350,000 from $1.875 million to $1.525 million for FY '20, it moves back up in FY '21. One other thing to point out is our total revenues are just under three-point, our projected revenues just under $4.3 million, where our expenses are $4.35 million. So we're looking at transferring approximately $60,000 from our Creeks Fund Reserve to balance the budget. That's not unusual for us, and for example, in the current year budget, we are transferring about $450,000 from reserve to balance budget, mostly to cover that additional capital cost that we have in the current year budget. This is the Creeks Division operating budget divided by our program areas. The Creeks Division has three primary program areas: water quality, creek restoration, and community outreach. Our Creeks Advisory Committee, many years ago, actually soon after Measure B was passed, indicated a desire, trying to reflect the community's interest in how the funds should be spent from Measure B. The direction we received from our advisory committee was aim for 50% of the funds going to water quality projects and programs, 25% to creek restoration, 25% to community outreach. As you can see, we're pretty close to those percentages in the proposed budget for FY Some of the highlights from this year's budget, this year's proposed budget, as I mentioned, Measure B is projected to be about $50,000 higher than it was in the FY '20, FY '2019 budget. On the expense side, our capital improvement program transfer is proposed to decrease by $350,000. We have a slight increase in stormwater quality monitoring for specific BMPs to determine the effectiveness of various BMPs for stormwater treatment, and we have a small transfer from reserves of just under $60,000 to balance the budget. This should say FY '20 capital program. You all are familiar through the capital improvement program presentations with many of the projects in the Creeks Division's capital program. I'd like to just highlight a few of them this afternoon. First of all, the first one on the chart here is the stormwater treatment retrofit projects. In the coming fiscal year, we're looking to do a stormwater treatment project in Bonnet Park as part of a larger park upgrade to that facility. We've designed a stormwater treatment project that's able to capture stormwater runoff from about six acres surrounding Bonnet Park. It will be treated and infiltrated in the soil underneath the field at Bonnet Park.
That's awesome. It's almost like science fiction in a way, isn't it? You're capturing the water, wow.
It's actually really, really simple. It's a really simple design, it's not science fiction-y at all, it's really intuitive once you see what we do there. But there will be a lot of excavation happening in Bonnet Park, and it looks like we're, you know, excavating a giant Olympic swimming pool there or something, and then we'll put stormwater infiltration chambers in. The third one on the list is the Royal Borough Open Space Restoration. We had a ribbon cutting there for Phase 1 of that project this past week, and we're moving into Phase 2, which will be some restoration of a tributary to a Royal Borough that's on that property, as well as some trail improvements. Just down from that, a Royal Borough restoration at Palermo Drive, that's the property acquisition. We're looking at purchasing five and a half acres at the end of Palermo Drive over in Hidden Valley that runs along Royal Borough, it's about 1,000 linear feet of a Royal Borough. And we're looking to close escrow on that property by the end of October, and we will begin our outreach and design work for that project right after that. And then lastly, third from the bottom is the Andre Clark Bird Refuge. We've been working on that project for a long time, and it's, and we're moving forward, and we're continuing through the design process. We're at about 35% design right now, which is the stage when we move into the permitting, so we're just beginning to work on our permitting. We have to go through seven different state and federal agencies for permits for that project, and so it may be a long process, but we've met with staff from all those agencies, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to continue moving forward with that and with the environmental review for that project. So we keep moving forward on that. This table identifies the sources of capital project funding for the Creeks Division over the past several years, and it gives an indication of the balance of the Measure B funds combined with grant funds to help us fund various Creeks Division capital projects throughout the city. The blue is the contribution from Measure B, and the purple color is the contribution from grants in any one of those given years. And as you can see, it's highly variable, like all of the grant programs that the Creeks Division submits applications for are very, very competitive. Some years, as you can see, we generate more grant funding than the amount of Measure B money put into the capital programs. Some years, it's more Measure B money, but we always have been able to achieve some level of grant funding. And over the past, well, since 2002, since the beginning of the Creeks Division, we've received over $20 million in grant funding. And the Creeks Division staff is very aggressive at looking for grant opportunities, and we're going to continue to do that to maximize and leverage the Measure B funds that we The Creeks Fund Reserve, the purpose of the reserves is for capital projects, grant matches, and revenue shortfalls. The target balance for the Creeks Fund Reserve is recommended from the Creeks Advisory Committee to be $3 million. We're looking at a year-end balance for FY '19 of approximately $2 million, and the reason we're below our target reserve balance is we moved $1.2 million from the reserve to purchase the property I mentioned earlier along a Royal Borough. We did just get notified about a week and a half ago that we received a $500,000 grant from, it's a Prop 1 grant, from the California River Parkway's Grant Program at the Natural Resources Agency at the state, and that money will be able to help us replenish the reserve fund as well as purchase that property. We're looking at using $60,000 from the reserve to balance this year's budget, and then for the FY '20, '21 budget, looking at moving approximately $320,000 over. So at the end of FY '20, '21, we're looking at a reserve balance of just over $2.1 million. We do have other grants pending for that acquisition, and if we're successful with those, that number should increase. Some performance measures for the Creeks Division for FY '20, we have a lot of them. This is just kind of a sampling of the range of work that we do. We will produce an annual water quality report that's available to the public on the Creeks Division website, sbcreeks.com, and it will have all of the monitoring results and data and analysis for the year included in that. I've mentioned the acquisition of the property at the end of Palermo Drive. We're going to complete construction of the stormwater treatment project in Bonnet Park, and we also are going to continue to provide youth watershed education programs with a target of reaching over 3,000 kids in the next year. And I will turn it over to Jill Zachary to relay the recommendations from the Creeks Advisory Committee and Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and council members, just our last slide, we take our budget every year to our advisory committees, so the Golf Advisory Committee recommended forwarding it to you at their April 10 meeting, similarly, the Creeks Advisory Committee on April 17, the Parks and Recreation Commission on April 24. And I would also add that BB Longstreet, one of our commissioners, is here and would like to make remarks to council. Thank you.
Ms. Longstreet, come on up, and anyone else out there? I see some faces that might, okay, good.
Good afternoon. The commission unanimously supported this 2020 budget and fees and charges, but we do have concerns about the impacts on the budget and the ability to maintain parks and facilities. Last week, you discussed the impacts of misuse in and around our parks and facilities, and the horrendous impact this has on our budget. There are other impacts, such as the cost of water, minimum wage increases, and changes to IPM that will also have impacts. The UUT decline is a decline in our street tree budget. The cost of water affects all of us, but it is highly visible when our parks are brown. I believe we will see our parks become even more important as housing density increases and residents have less personal open space. We need to maintain our parks as they become, excuse me, the backyard to more people. I think we should be discussing this with the same intensity that we discuss parking as we discuss housing. It is time for minimum wage to go up, but we must deal with the impacts to recreation services. Our summer camps and after-school programs are important services to the community, and also the first jobs for many young people. We can't always cover these costs with fee increases since it impacts families who will no longer be able to participate. It is important to be able to offer services such as RAP and after-school sports to those most in need for us to maintain a healthy community. IPM may be seeing even more changes in the future. Before the economic downturn, parks had a green team to help offset the effects of stopping chemical use. They spread mulch, treated weeds with heat, and did handwork in our parks. These positions went away, and many of our parks show the effects. At the time we adopted IPM, the thought was that volunteers would pull weeds. Well, that didn't really happen, so I think we need to deal with the reality. And I will say, basically, what staff won't, and that is more people. We have endured the cuts over, since 2008, and they haven't been reestablished, and it affects the look of our parks, but that affects our park safety. If you have more eyes and ears in the park doing work, there are less people doing bad things. There are less places for people to hide. So I would advocate always for parks workers, for grounds workers, and I don't think that's something that staff can always say, they're balancing it against the big picture, but I think my job is to advocate for the community and for our parks. Our park infrastructure is also aging, and there are many renovations in the works. I hope we can move these projects forward and look to the future needs of our communities, such as housing density increases in the downtown core. And we don't want people to have cars, and now where will they recreate? So we need to make sure that we keep our space open and green and accessible, and that we look to the future on what the needs of the community are. Very pleased that the golf is rebounding and is able to be accessible as a reasonable, at reasonable fees to our community, and of course, we are always blessed to have creeks. That was something our community gave us, and I think the city has been a great steward of those funds. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Longstreet. Darrell Scheck? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council. Darrell Scheck with SEIU Local 620. Just had a few comments about the Golf Fund. Looking back in 2018 budget documents, there was a line item that talked about 2018 operating maintenance cost per total rounds played. It appears that in 2020, this metric no longer exists. So there's no longer a comparison to see what the actual maintenance cost is per round that's actually played. So I just have to reiterate, how can you measure the success or failure of the city's initiative to contract out the operations if there's a key metric that's not included in the budget document? Also, it is of note, and I'll just say, that the actual number of rounds played has actually fallen from 2016 to 2018, but I'm not going to pull any punches, that's an industry-wide problem. I think it's actually gone down by 2% at the city, but it is an industry-wide problem. In terms of actual expenditures, when you compare the 2016 actual golf course expenditures, the budget, or the actuals for that year in 2016 came in at $1,856,000, and in 2020, the expenditures were projected to be $2,878,000. That's over a million dollars a year increase in expenditures over four years, so it's a 55% increase in budget over four years for maintenance of the golf course. So once again, we just have to, you know, question the increase in expenditures and wonder if it couldn't have been done better by our people rather than laying them off. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry the Golf Concessionaire left, he didn't hear your remarks. So that closes our public comment, and I did have a Creeks question, and then we can go to closing remarks, and we'll go with Mr. Rouse first in case. So the Andre Clark Bird Refuge, can you remind me when the season is for? can you remind me when the season is for smelliness? And did the rain, the big rains we had this winter, is that going to help? Or did it help? What's the season for that?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, the season for smelliness at the Bird Refuge can be anytime. It really depends on a lot of different environmental conditions. A very significant part of that is whether or not the water has been flushed through the Bird Refuge and whether we have an opportunity for new, fresh, clean water to be stored in the Bird Refuge. And so we've had really, really bad stink events at the Bird Refuge on the Fourth of July. We've had them for Fiesta. We've actually had them for Thanksgiving. So it can be, it's usually in that half of the year, those six months, because it's drier and warmer. So...
I was asking about the rains we had in the winter.
Thank you. And the rains we had this winter were significant enough to really flush the Bird Refuge out and to open the sand berm at the beach and let that water flush through. There is a weir or kind of a dam at the Bird Refuge that prevents more water from flushing out, and that's part of what we're working on with this design. Will allow a more thorough flushing of the water and hopefully allow us to improve water quality that way.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse, would you like to make your question and comment?
Very quickly, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm always pleased and impressed how well the Parks and Rec budget does, given that it's our third-largest general fund budget. It's always been traditionally low-hanging fruit for cuts when it came to cut time. So, you know, given what we have, our challenges with labor and programming, I'm very pleased at the budget that was presented to us today. As far as the Bird Refuge goes, I'm really pleased that Creeks has taken this on. That is a major gateway to the community. It is a major drawback when it does have its episodes. So I know you've got quite a lot of hurdles permit-wise to get through to get there, but it's definitely a worthy project. I'm glad to see that's a priority.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nennen?
Thank you. I'm so appreciative of this whole Division, Department, and Parks and Recreation. The parks are the gems of our community, and preserving open space and the programming for young and old and all the ages in between is really so valuable to us. I appreciate that you're being careful still with water use, even though we're out of our extreme drought. And I appreciate too, Ms. Longstreet, that that does keep them a little bit browner, but I'm appreciative of that. I'm really excited about the Cabrillo Pavilion opening and looking forward to events there. And McKenzie Off Leash Dog Park, there's a lot of discussion on Nextdoor San Rokey about when is it opening, and there's a lot of interest in that. So excited about that. I'm also happy that you're continuing to keep tree planting a priority. I think that came from us up here, too, and we're really appreciative of that. And just encouraging to look into the alternatives to glyphosate and Roundup. And I appreciate, too, that that may be difficult, but thank you for looking at that. On a bigger note, on the parks part first, I would like you to come back to council if there's the will here to, we've heard multiple ways to address the security, whether it's, I would think it's a park ranger, but I would trust that you could come back to us with what we really can do to make a difference in that. And I would personally like to approve the funding now so that you knew what you had to work with and then be able to address that and give us your recommendations for that. Just, I think it's really important. For Creeks, I just really thank you for managing our water quality restoration. Your outreach is really amazing. Your Creeks Committee can't speak highly enough of you and how your careful management of funds and leveraging grant funding. Excited about the stormwater treatment that's happening at Bonnet Park. I think that's, hopefully, will be part of what we do more throughout the city. Obviously, the Andre Clark improvements also, and the education programs. I think that's something that I've seen with all of my kids through, and it's just, it's so successful. It's such a successful program. And when we can educate our children, then they come home and they educate us, and it really makes a big change to the community. For the golf, I have to say, it really is a great value for the money. It's a really beautiful facility. My kids have participated in guppy golf. My father-in-law has a memorial bench there. It was one of his favorite places to be. And my daughter was on the golf team, and it's one of those places that you still can afford to go and be in open space. And even for those of us who aren't accomplished, it's not the Montecito Country Club, which I'm thankful for. And it's a very accessible facility that people use not just for golfing. So I think it's a well-run program. But I do take the comment that maybe some metrics on whether, a comparison on whether the contracting out versus in-house is successful or not. I think that's all that I really have, other than to just really emphasize that I think we need to improve the security. So we had suggestions from Mayor Mario, park ranger, surveillance, I don't know, whatever it is that you can bring back to us that would be supported.
I think how we would, we forward with that, Mr. Casey and Ms. Antill, is we would ask you to come back with options of the measures and then how to fund them, because it might be, we'd have to look for money somewhere. And so, that's their job, is to figure out where the money would come from and if we would approve that expenditure or reserve or whatever, wherever it's going to come from. So, okay, so Mr. Friedman.
Great. I have two questions and then some comments. The first is, how has the success with the Chase Palm Park, the merry-go-round? I know we redid that last year. So this is, I think, the first full year we've had it. So can you talk to that item?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, it's actually doing pretty well. We've been projecting, and as part of our third quarter, recommendations for adjustments for this fiscal year, adding revenue, because we were conservative going into fiscal year '19. It's becoming quite a popular place for a variety of events, both meetings and parties and venues. We did, the city did, invest quite a bit in upgrading the facility, and so it's really taken off and done really well. And we only hope to continue to enhance that.
That's great to hear. The other question is from Mr. Benson. Wasn't presented today, and it's not a project, but I just wanted to say, in light of this year being the first year we've had significant rains in basically a decade, and we had the Mission Creek projects to redo the channel, that, one, thank you, you were instrumental in getting those funded about seven or eight years ago. Have we, one, how have they functioned in terms of the water flowing through? And then were there any steelhead sightings?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, I think you're referring to the Steelhead Passage projects. And the answer is, we, over the years, have done a lot, since those were completed, have done a lot of monitoring to see how it performs under different conditions, particularly in the Caltrans Channel or the big flood control channel, because that's a new design for how to deal with fish passage in a flood control channel, where you can slow the water down for fish but keep the water moving fast enough not to increase flooding hazards. So what that monitoring's revealed is that, from a technical standpoint, the conditions are actually better in that fish channel than they are in the natural parts of the creek. In other words, we've been able to make the water deeper than it would be in the natural creek, and it actually moves more slowly. With the little cutouts in the side of that channel, the water actually moves upstream. So it eddies, and so there's a space for resting for fish. We haven't seen, when we built those channels, we had seen eight out of 10 years where we had adult anadromous steelhead coming up from the ocean trying to get up Mission Creek, and they couldn't get past that channel. Since that time and since the drought, we haven't seen steelhead coming up Mission Creek or really a lot of the South Coast streams. I mean, we just haven't had the water. And so people have identified fish in the local streams, trout, but they're resident trout, and we haven't seen the steelhead coming up from the ocean.
Thank you. This is the first year we had rain, so hopefully, maybe we'll have a good year next year, and we'll see if they come back. So I just want to thank our staff, all of our park staff. You all do a great job in service to our city. Our parks are extremely important for the quality of life, and so all the staff everywhere is doing a terrific job with the resources at hand and a lot of the new projects that are coming online. Pleased to see the McKenzie Dog Park is almost near completion. We just got a puppy, so we'll be over there when it's done. So we're looking forward to going over there. I want to thank our public commenters today. I think you raised a lot of salient issues that we need to be either monitoring or evaluating. And then, in particular, Ms. Longstreet, I also agree that the use of park space and creation of new park space is something that we do need to take into consideration with higher density development, which reduces the former standards for open space on projects, because where else are people going to go? They're going to go to the parks. And then on the golf, I just want to say, it is a great value. I go to the driving range and go with my kids. They did the, I think it's Russ Morrison, lessons, which I think in terms of activities, it's probably, I think, per dollar spent and the cost, it might be the best value of any camp you have in the city. It's $75, or it was last year, $75 for 18 lessons that are an hour and a half each. So you get a professional teaching your kid how to golf. They're in a group lesson, but they learn putting, chipping, and driving, and they're outdoors for an hour and a half on a Saturday. And it's the equivalent of $4, I think, a lesson or whatever that amounts to. You can't beat that anywhere. And just to see, my own two sons went through it, and they both, my older son's better than I am now, but I'm not a good golfer, so can't really have, that's not a metric you want to publish. But it's such a great value, and it just shows the quality of the programs we have. And then, as for the park ranger, I'm glad we'll be bringing back just options, not as a park ranger, but security, I should say. My concern with a park ranger is that when you, addition to the cost, I mean, we have to invest to make sure our parks are safe, but if we have a park ranger or another form and we start moving people along outside the parks, that's good for our parks, but they're going to go somewhere. And most likely, they're going to go to some of the other hotspots that we have identified that have been up here. So it's kind of, we really need to, Councilmember Dominguez mentioned this, we need to treat the symptom, or we need to go for the cure rather than the symptoms of it. So I want to make sure that whatever we're doing, we're not just reshuffling where the problems are, and then it's like, well, they're going to be at Casique Street or McKenzie Park. So we really need to strategically look at that if we decide to go down the route of a park ranger or something else, but just be aware of those. So if you could look into those issues or at least provide us some kind of guidance on that, on where, on that issue. One thing I would say is that increased programming in the parks, it does help to alleviate that. We're seeing it in McKenzie, the construction's there, but you mentioned the Cabrillo Ballfield. So that's one way to do it. It costs more upfront. It takes a longer time, but it's a permanent, or more of a permanent fix, where the community is actually getting value out of it, too, where they're able to use the parks. So if we look at this comprehensively, if there are types of programming, even if they're festivals or some types of things like that, that we could do in the parks that are maybe not necessarily capital projects that cost hundreds or a couple million dollars, but just types of things that we could do in some of our parks in terms of just programming, getting people into them, I would like to look at that, too, as an option for, among other things, public safety. And again, thank you for all the great work that staff is doing.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Mr. Dominguez?
Yeah, I want to agree with Mr. Friedman on that front. The programming is so important. And if it's a choice between something like hiring a park ranger and hiring more programming, I would definitely emphasize the programming. Maybe there's a way to put a food truck or some kind of food concession at Ortega Park that would bring in more non-crime-based users, because the problem there is the criminal activity. It's not anyone's status or any demographic, but it's people who are actually violating the state penal code that are the problem. And I think the programming would be a very key way to help. I'm glad you mentioned what the duties of the ranger are, because that doesn't really line up with what the problem is. So I'm not sure if that should be somewhere where we invest resources unless we study the problem and that's indicated. I agree with Ms. Longstreet, more people. This department is heavily subsidized by the general fund, and I just want to make sure the more we stray from traditional Parks and Rec, the more we are doing quantitative and qualitative analysis of the outcomes. I think we owe that duty to the taxpayers. And I think so far, because of the programs listed, we are certainly meeting that or exceeding those expectations, but I just want to make sure we continue to do that. One of the programs I'd like to look at is a Neighborhood Advisory Council. It's a venerable program, but I think there's some tweaks we can make that would make it more effective. I don't know if, you know, how significant of a cost center that is in terms of staff time. Do you happen to have any numbers on that handy or percentage of an FTE?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the Neighborhood Advisory Council meets once a month. So as far as our department is concerned, traditionally, it's been staffed by Parks and Recreation. But it does involve staff from throughout the city, because a lot of the issues they look at actually are not related to Parks and Recreation. When the Advisory Council was established by council, gosh, I think back in 2009, it really was to address neighborhood-wide issues, and that group does do that. And so there are staff from Public Works, the Police Department, Parks and Recreation. Currently, the City Administrator's Office is serving as the liaison to that committee. And from a staffing standpoint, I'm not sure the committee itself takes a lot of time. One of the benefits and advantages of that committee is it introduces a wide range of Santa Barbara residents to civic issues and decisions and how the city operates. And they actually become quite effective contributors to how we evaluate problems and provide services. So there's a balance, there's a balance there in terms of the work effort that goes in and then also the advice that we get from residents through that process.
And I definitely see that as one of the liaisons. And I do notice, though, that some of the presentations that are made there are made at other committees or commissions in the city where staff is then adding another visit. And I don't know if there's certain issue areas that we might be able to move. And it certainly is a venue where the participants are active and passionate, but there may be a way to channel that more effectively. And I don't know if we look at changing the geographical nature so they can handle more localized issues. I think there's a trade-off either way. The more local you are, maybe the more passionate, and the more people will be involved. But then you lose possibly the cross-fertilization of ideas and greater regionalization. But those are just something that, I don't know what the process would be, maybe take it to the commission to look at, but just something I want to introduce as a concept. But overall, I'm really excited about the department. Its successes are amazing. I think absolutely right that the more we add residents to the city, the more we have an obligation to increase the ability of our parks to allow people to have recreation activities, particularly in our denser areas. The Japanese have a concept called forest bathing, where you get out into nature and it rejuvenates your mental health, your physical health, and we absolutely need to double down on that. Everyone's talking about steps, so let's get people out there walking, going into these parks. So thank you and your staff for doing a great job of doing all that.
Thanks. Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff, again, for all the great work that you do. I just want to reiterate again, I'm sorry, I want to reiterate again about the security issue and how video surveillance has come pretty far in what we can do. issue and how video surveillance has come pretty far in what we can do. Nowadays, so-called smart cities allow the residents to be able to view whether a park is crowded on their phone. So that's stuff that I think, you know, if we decide to go with a video surveillance route, that we can implement for our citizens and our residents here as well and also just give them peace of mind that they're at a park where they can feel safe, knowing that they're being recorded. And people tend to act differently and safer when they know they're being recorded. So that's all I want to say and thanks again for all the hard work.
Okay. I'm going to make some comments. So Mr. Scheck, if you send me questions of information you're looking for, I'll make sure that you get it. And I wish I had asked the golf concession area, what have they been doing to increase rounds? That's a fair, a fair question to them. I had a thought when Mayor Protem Friedman was asking about this steelhead and there are several species on the endangered species list that fall within our care in our city limits, some Tidewater Gobi, Plover, Leesturn, maybe? So maybe that would be a nice presentation to the Sustainability Committee. I've just been wanting to know what's there. We do care, but unless we ask for a presentation, we might not get it. So I did want to remind, in terms of the, in terms of security, the report from April 24th had talked about posting hours and signage and so you can't really enforce anything unless it's properly signed, right? So that's part of the effort that you'll, when you bring back, what, yeah, Ms. Zachary, sorry.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I neglected to include the fact that we are working with the City Attorney's Office to make some recommendations to First Ordinance Committee and Council regarding park hours and other park use issues that council has asked about, particularly as it relates to playgrounds. That gives us tools to help manage how people function in a park. And also, clearly, we will be recommending some very consistent park hours so that law enforcement know that no matter what park it is, when it's supposed to be open and when it's supposed to be closed. And so that gives them a tool if there's an activity that they need to address in that park. And it also gives us an ability to address issues as well. Some of the other things that we are doing more and more is we're closing our park gates and posting closing hours and that prevents people from accessing those spaces, certainly in vehicles, when we don't need that type of activity in the park. So there are a variety of different things that we do, which we certainly will bring back in a comprehensive manner, so you can see sort of the palette of strategies we use today and which ones we could use more of, depending on the situation.
And I'm assuming that the design, the new design of Ortega Park, it was looked at through the lens of design preventing loitering. Isn't that funny? I mean, we want people to sit and be in the park, but it looks a lot like loitering. So how do we, how do we balance that?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, the master plan for Ortega calls for design elements that clearly help define play areas, because you have to have a fence around a pool. We always fence our playgrounds, but also we're proposing clear delineation of park boundaries. And we do that in our other parks. Chase Palm Park has a fence all the way around it and it just helps establish that space and where you can enter and where you can exit, what the hours are. And at the same time, in the case of Ortega, one of the first things we hope to proceed with are actually the right-of-way improvements. So we'll actually have a walking path around the park. So it's just a variety of different ways that we can go about providing access and opportunity, yet also making sure that we discourage activities that are not conducive to healthy park play.
And then we should look to how the new city net effort would interface with the urban parks. I know that they were, they're patrolling and they're doing outreach and so that would be a good, another good strategy to look at. So that's all I have. Really proud of our Parks Department. And Ms. Sneddon has her light on, she has one more thought.
Well, I have a question. If, how does it work in the budget? We have a balanced budget right now and if it's...
The final, oh, here comes Mr. Casey. So right at the end, there's going to be those outside requests for money and then we all, we look at it and arm wrestle. Go ahead, Mr. Casey.
I know, exactly. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. So, correct, I have presented you with the balanced budget. So one of the challenges we face is that we don't have a pot of money to look at extra requests from. So what we like to do to kind of structure that scenario is as we go through the department presentations, like today, you've raised an issue that you'd like us to look at, bring back some options, maybe at a variety of cost levels, also kind of get some background on what our existing conditions are. But then we can bring that back with whatever request you have. In the first week of June, we have what's called a budget balancing session. And so that's where you'll evaluate it. You also have all the requests from the outside entities that were unsolicited but are presented to you for consideration and so you'll have to balance those as well. Depending upon the magnitude of where you want to go, we might have to look at reducing budgets or programs or expenditures in other departments. I will just caution you, that's always really hard. You want to fund parks, does that mean you're willing to reduce something in the Police Department? Probably not. You willing to reduce something in the library? Probably not. And so it's hard. We're, as Ms. Longstreet said, we've kind of recalibrated the size of the organization down to a slimmer organization than where we were 10 years ago. And all the departments are kind of struggling, still kind of living off of that. So there's not a lot of easy answers for you, but that's why we recommend that you wait until that meeting in the first week of June, so you compare all the requests together, so you're considering it at one time. So I wouldn't encourage you to make a decision today just on this department, because you need to balance it against everything else.
And I would, oh, go ahead. I would add that we're in contract negotiations with three of our employee units and so that's another juggling act with how we allocate our funds.
Yep. And just the one issue with that though, depending upon the magnitude, we also now have had the benefit of a couple more months of revenue estimates from key revenues, so sometimes we take a fresh look at that and are able to maybe adjust those to carve a little bit of money out. So those are all the types of things we go to try to then adopt a balanced budget. I would highly discourage us from getting into spending from reserves on operational costs. I think that's a really bad approach to go.
Thank you. And then I remembered one other park activity that attended, my brother-in-law got married this year at the, I guess it's the Chase Palm Recreation, it's across the street there and it was so lovely and beautiful. And they looked at everywhere in town and in Carp and all over and chose that without my influence and it was, it was a really, really lovely event location and just wanted to add that too. So we don't say now what we would like to recommend for budget, we wait and that's what I'll do. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, we do encourage all single people to get married and to use our facilities. So I'm going to close on that note and mention that the next budget meeting is Monday, the 13th, and it's library and community development. And then we'll have our city council meeting on the Tuesday and then we're coming back on Wednesday, so another big week for us. And on Wednesday, the 15th, it's finance, general government, administrative services, City Attorney's Office, get ready, Mr. Colon, City Administrator's Office and Mayor and Council. Mr. Dominguez, do you have something else?
Yeah, I wanted to get a clarification on the last comment from Councilmember Sneddon about now being not the time for input on budget.
I think staff is listening to our, right, we're not going to make a decision today. We're, they're, okay, I'm sorry, what do you need to know?
Well, I may have misunderstood her, but it sounded like she said now is not the time to give them input. Okay, you mean time to make a vote? Because if there's something you want them to change in their budget, they do need some time to work things out.
I think I'm understanding that now is not the time for me to make any kind of motion for an amount or to make adjustments to the budget and I will reserve that until the end.
So I think now would be the time to suggest if you wanted 10 rangers, like if you had a specific suggestion, you're not talking about something like that. You're just talking about approving staff's budget.
I'm talking about $130,000 at a minimum for whatever staff comes up with that will help the situation that we continue to address here.
Okay, so Mr. Casey?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, what I'm hearing is at least a couple of you have requested that park staff that we bring back to you some options for additional park security. And we'll look at a variety of options about how, and more than two of you have kind of mentioned that, we'll look at a variety of options about what that might be. I think what Councilwoman Sneddon was saying is earlier in the conversation, she said she wanted to make a motion today to actually make a budget adjustment for that and I'm discouraging her from doing that until you, so you have a chance to look at it with all the different departments after you've had a chance to review them. But we clearly have heard that we're going to bring back an analysis of what some options are on park security and then you can make that determination that first week in June.
Okay. And so, kind of separate from that, but I guess related, my questions about park security are addressed today to Parks and Rec staff because they're here. I don't necessarily see it as their primary responsibility to secure the parks. What I'd love to see is their analysis of what the parks could look like with, let's say, just pulling something out of the air, but greater policing that might reduce some of the criminal element. In other words, what did Ortega Park look like at its height in terms of users? How many children, given that there's a junior high next door, might be able to go there and use the park? Like kind of what's the best-case scenario? And then when police are here or whatever other department might play a heavier role in park security, that might be where we address it. I don't know if we need, you know, $130,000 for Parks and Rec rangers versus $130,000 for a police officer. So I'm just asking today because they're here. I'm not saying necessarily that anything I have as an idea should come out of their budget, including programming, but programming is probably something that they've mulled over in terms of what it could impact. And something like putting a food truck there could be a double whammy in the sense of it might bring in income and revenue that might pay for something that might also add security. But that kind of programming brings more people to the park, which would discourage criminal behavior. Crime hates eyes. So I just wanted to make that clear, that I wasn't putting onto your plate greater security responsibility, just asking what is happening so that when other agencies are here, I can have a more informed opinion. Thank you.
So Ms. Zachary, are you clear with all of our commentary then? Okay. And I'll close the meeting now. Thanks, everybody.